It is now 5:06, May 2nd, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy will be arriving late. Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience, so may we have a declaration of closed session items by City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have, I think, nine items listed on the agenda for the City Council, items A, B, C, and D. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the City Council are related to items E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority. It's all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. That is the litigation between Comm Ave. and the Airport Authority. And the actual case names and parties to the litigation and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The parcel numbers and the negotiating parties on behalf of those parcel numbers, along with the city's negotiators, are all set forth on the agenda. Item I is anticipated litigation, also pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. And again, the facts and circumstances relating to that are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session and regular session convened at 6:00 PM. And today is May 2nd, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have our, well, may we have our closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had nine closed session items this evening. Item A, on behalf of the City Council, was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 945 point, sorry, 945956.9D2. The facts and circumstances relating to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the City Council, and items E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority are all related. They are pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D was real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The parcel numbers and the negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item I was anticipated litigation, again pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that litigation are also set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. We will have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be led by our City Manager, Doug Robertson, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Chief John Schuler, so please stand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Honored to do the invocation for the second meeting in a row. I will let you know that we do have pastors scheduled for the remaining future. We just couldn't quite get one here tonight, so please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing everyone here safely. We ask for safe travels home, ask for a good meeting where ideas are exchanged in a healthy way, Father, and that the City Council considers your authority in meeting out their authority, Father. We especially thank you every time for sending your Son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins, and we pray these things in his name. Amen.
This will be to the Victorville Elks Lodge Number 1877 Youth Week Proclamation, and I will come down and present it. I don't have a name, or do we have a person here that will be receiving?
Someone here, yes.
Okay, very good. I'll come down. proclaiming the first week of May is observance of Elks National Youth Week honoring the junior citizens of this community for their accomplishments and services to the community, state, and And I present this proclamation to you?
The Elks does a lot to support the community and children. And if you don't know anything about the Elks, look it up on the website. It's not a secret. Look it up, and we do a lot for the community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. the agenda to the Council, please?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the Council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 549-57.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council, and there are two revisions to tonight's agenda. The first one is related to Public Hearing Agenda Item B3. This is a letter in support of Ordinance Number 2365 from the Building Industry Association. The second one is a revision to Item Number D3, and this is a staff report that was submitted by Councilmember Gomez. These revisions have been provided to both the public and the Council at the dais, and those are all the revisions I have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings, so we move on to public hearings. And our first item, B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption from Mojave, Mojave Drive, MFS Road Traffic Signal Control, Signal Project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption at the close of the public hearing.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards at this time on this particular item. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And do we have any comments or questions by Councilmembers?
There are no questions. Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the recommendation. Staff?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, PLN 15-0035, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a site plan, conditional use permit, and a zone change to reclassify from CM Commercial Manufacturing to C2 General Commercial. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the City Council at the close of the public hearing approve the project by taking the following actions. Adopt a negative declaration for the project pursuant to Section 15074 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Waive further reading and introduce Ordinance Number 2366 approving the zone change. Adopt Resolution Number 17-013 approving the site plan, and adopt Resolution Number 17-014 approving the conditional use permit.
I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards from anyone that desires to address the Council. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And do we have any comments or questions by Councilmembers?
Yes. Would staff please provide history regarding this project?
Mike Szczesinski is one of our staff planners. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmembers. The approval tonight is for a hotel along Mariposa Road. And typically, we, the planning commission, would just approve the site plan and the conditional use permit. However, currently, it's zoned Commercial Manufacturing. And the reason it's brought to council with the whole item intact is that we need to change the zone from Commercial Manufacturing to Commercial. However, the general plan of Commercial will stay the same.
Was there a demolition permit submitted by the applicant, or will the city be taking care of it?
Currently, the site is vacant except for a billboard.
Right.
So the applicant at the time will submit a demolition permit for the removal of the billboard.
What's going to occur to that billboard?
I'm sorry?
What will be occurring to that billboard?
Oh, to be removed, not relocated within the city.
I know there's, there's an ordinance in play for every two removal, for every, yeah, two.
Correct. And in this case, it'll just be removed and not replaced within the city.
Okay, just, and probably recycled and, okay. What's the city history of the billboard agreement? And I'd like also to receive a copy of that billboard, the locations agreement document, if that can be in my inbox, please. And did the applicant see a reduction bill of boards? Did they actually notice that?
It never came up in the time we were working with the applicant. However, it was noted that he was required to indicate on the site plan that the billboard will be removed, and staff did condition it. I think it's Planning Condition Number 16 that, that the billboard shall be removed and not replaced.
Thank you.
There's no billboard relocation agreement involved in this transaction at all?
No, and it never was proposed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Can we, does one motion cover all four?
Yes, you can, after I read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville adopting the zone change portion of case number PLN 15-00035, a zone change to reclassify property from CM Commercial Manufacturing to C2 General Commercial with a mitigated negative declaration on property located at the northeast corner of Mariposa Road and Talpa Street.
Move approval of the, adopting the negative declaration, adopting the Ordinance 2366, adopt Resolution 17013, and 17014.
And waive further reading of the ordinance.
Waive further reading.
Are we still on B2?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and adding sections to the Victorville Municipal Code. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council conduct the public hearing previously opened and continued to May 2nd, 2017, close the public hearing, make the environmental exemption finding, introduce Ordinance Number 2365 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed Ordinance Number 2365.
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have one card. Gordon Nichols.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Gordon Nichols. I serve as the Senior Government Affairs Director for the Building Industry Association, Baldview Chapter. I wanted to briefly touch bases with you tonight on Ordinance Number 2365, and also commend the City of Victorville for all the hard work that has been put into this ordinance so far. We have been working with the planning staff and the City Manager's office for several months now on this ordinance, and we believe that what is before you is a very business-friendly and tactical approach to help the City of Victorville and the developers here move forward and continue to revive the housing market and bringing this ordinance before you tonight is something that we've all been looked at, we've worked on, and BIA is fully supportive of it. The agreement, the lien agreement as securities for subdivision improvements will help builders move forward, will help them have more capital to finish projects that they've started, and we've seen it used very successfully in other cities, and it is something that is very safe for the city to move forward to, and will ensure that projects can continue to move forward. So we're in full support of it. We wanted to thank the City Manager and the Planning Commission and the city staff for taking all the time that they have on this, and we are in 100% support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the only card that I had. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from Councilmembers?
Yes. The recession of 2008 has affected residential developers, and eight years after stakeholders are asking for relief. Is that correct?
I'm not sure how to answer that question exactly. I don't know that it's relief. It's more about flexibility. Right now, the city's current code would require them to put up bonds, and this would give them an option of liens for properties that have not begun construction yet. Before construction begins, they would have to put up bonds.
So you're giving me a little bit of the history. Also, why are the stakeholders having issues with the security subdivision improvements with the cities to guarantee the construction and installation of the required public improvements?
I'm not even sure what that question was. Keith, you want to give it a shot?
Yeah, I can give it a shot. I think the biggest issue has to do more so with just the tightening of securities available for subdivisions and to, and to secure the improvements. The traditional form of security is in the form of a bond or, or an insurance policy effectively, and over, even short term, but typically as tracts go, they can exist over a long period of time. They can be tremendously expensive to the developers. So this also becomes a mechanism to actually make it more affordable for developers, development to withstand the ebbs and flows of the economic cycle and allow tracts to, in fact, be recorded without having to cost absorbent amounts of monies to, to secure other forms of securities.
Now, the second half of your question, though, had to do with improvements sort of at the end of the project, and this wouldn't have any effect on that. These are for projects that have not begun construction yet.
And these are projects that will, basically are not going to be done for a two-year period. They're not imminent.
They're not envisioned to be done within two years, correct?
I'm sorry?
They're not envisioned to be completed within two years, correct?
In fact, we make the finding that it's not in the city's interest for them to be done in the next two years, if I remember right.
That's correct. That's how it's written.
So I'm hoping today this item is only for discussion, not action. It's not the Pelosi where you must pass it to know what the fees will be, and right? The city is also a business, just like the stakeholders are. Their resources can't be used for free or any kind of business that is like, we do have a lot of top-notch personnel and talents. And I want to make that clear, and I want the, I don't want it to be that we're passing a certain revision or resolution, as it was pointed out, and then we're being brought back into litigation. And I guess Council would know a little bit what I'm talking about. What is the established fee? Do we know that?
Well, the established fees, I believe, are on page three of the staff report, and it's my understanding that they're not intended to change when they do get incorporated into our standard list or schedule of fees. And I think on page three, it says currently $650 for the lien agreement and a deposit of $12,000 per tract. So those are the current rates.
So reading, reading the note that there, there are no inferences made as the reader, so when I read it, the city's cost of preparing and processing these liens agreements, which you named, it is $650, and it provides for a $12,000 deposit per tract map to cover the property and the acreage cost, so it would stay. This reads to me as a waiver of fees in one respect. I'd like to table this item, Ordinance Number 2365, until the deposit and the processing fee is established into a schedule of fees. That's going to be my motion. And if it dies, my vote will reflect what I've mentioned. The language needs to be clear as I read it now. It's very ambiguous. I see a lot of limbo. And then, so then comes the next question. What would the lien be against and to what set amount? If staff could look into Section 3 of Chapter 17.64 of Title 17 of the Municipal Code, the new section, 17.65065, Section J, to incorporate a clear schedule of fees, that would be great. Again, the fees aren't established, and it's imperative that we find initial ground that we have established fees before there is a call to vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow all that. I think there was some mention of fees, but, but this, this issue doesn't involve fees. It only involves a lien. And I thought I heard a motion to table. Did I?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was a motion to table.
I was in the middle of all that. Could, was that a motion?
That was the motion to table. I didn't hear a cer, to a certain date, but the motion was to table.
We can actually, I believe Ms. Metzler has a probably better answer than I was going to give, so I'll let him take it.
I can speak as to the fees. So the fees are already established, and effectively, by taking action in this, it's further memorializing the existing fees. They're not changing, so what's in the item are the fees that are already in place.
So in 2011, there was an ordinance approved by City Council that modified the Municipal Code, which allowed for the liens agreements to be used as substitutes for existing securities. Mind you, Section C, Section 6 Council is considering its final passage. Will the City of Victorville be issuing lien agreements for individual lots that have been sold and/or when any construction permits, grading, or building permits have been issued for any of the properties? And also, when will the, when will this apply to the projects of public improvement that have already begun? And I know there's a sunset date of six years. There's an extension.
Right. So effectively, what this is doing, and, and, it sounds like you're kind of getting a little far down the path in, 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 in the construction phase, but really where this fits in is after a tentative map has been approved at the planning commission level and among the conditions of approval that a tentative map will get, it'll actually identify the requirement for a subdivision agreement to be in place. That subdivision agreement is typically a document that's going to define what are the requisite public improvements to be constructed. For the subdivision agreement to actually have value to it is what constitutes the triggering of some kind of bond or security, and that's what's traditionally been required. All this item is doing is accepting a different form of mechanism to secure or make that subdivision agreement good. Once the lien, if chosen by the developer and this, and accepted by the city as a mechanism, once the lien is signed and effectuated, it then gets recorded against the actual tract. And it'll actually sit as a lien instrument recorded against a tract until such a time that the developer is about to start on the construction of the tract. When the track is ready to be developed, that's the most likely time when the lien instrument gets removed and replaced with a different kind of bond, a construction bond, and a performance guarantee bond.
And that would be required. They could replace the lien with bonds at any time, but before they begin construction, they'd be required to replace it with bonds. So kind of the second half of your question is moot, because they don't get to construction without having bonds in place. The liens can't secure the property once construction starts.
Okay, then I'll modify my, my movement to table it if we can include the, the schedule of table fees to be indeed the 650, and providing the $12,000 to be the deposit per tract maps. That was my only issue. It's not clear to me, and it's very ambiguous, and I'm afraid on voting on something like this just to wait what the next fees, the next schedule of fees would be.
I'm confident that that's what this action does, is establish those.
So if that is indeed the case, then I don't have an issue. I would like for the schedule of fees to be, for the I would like for the schedule of fees to be, for the record, already embedded, even though we're going to start getting it probably next agenda.
Madam Mayor, if there is no motion, I'm going to make a motion that we make environmental impact exemption finding that we adopt, we're going to adopt the ordinance 2365.
It would be to way further reading and introduce, and introduce, actually. And I can read the title of the ordinance before you act on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2365, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, amending section 17.64.060 and adding section 17.64.065 to chapter 17.64, the Victorville Municipal Code, relating to the city's acceptance of lien agreements as securities for subdivision improvement agreements. There's a motion by Mr. Kennedy to adopt staff's recommendation.
Second. Environmental exemption. Second.
I believe Mr. Negretti seconded first. Okay. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Would you please repeat again what the motion is?
It's to adopt the staff recommendation as set out on the agenda.
Now we move on to consent calendar.
I haven't voted.
Is the vote, I think we have to record the votes.
Yes, we need to record the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm voting no because we didn't establish the schedule of fees.
Motion carries with council member Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, item C1 through C11 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
And on that item, the one we just voted on, I wasn't finished. I still had a suggestion in regards to the reading of the actual item.
Don't know how you reopen something.
The item's already been acted on.
Okay, then council comments.
We're on consent calendar, correct?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, agreement.
Can we stop for a moment? I'm sorry.
Construction, management and inspection services for the runway 17/35 rehabilitation phase 1A project. Madam clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors accepts the selection of WSP, formerly known as Parsons Brinkerhoff, as the Southern California Logistics Airport qualified engineering firm and approve the award of a standard consultant professional services provider agreement to WSP for bidding support, construction management and inspection services to be provided in support of the runway 1735 rehabilitation phase 1A project, number ESC 17-107, for a not to exceed amount of $880,298.97.
Is there any discussion or?
Yeah, can we, can we slow down a little bit? Because in the consent calendar, I needed to remove because I have questions on a lot of items. And so I didn't hear that we were putting a vote for the consent calendar. So I don't appreciate that. We're moving at a speed where I'm not able to pay attention to what's happening and I have to consistently ask to please repeat something. And I don't want to make this another session that's going to be another two or three hours. I just want to be able to pull items, discuss the items and go at a pace where I'm understanding what's happening. So if I'm stopping to ask, I'm trying to be respectful and courteous to the rest of my council. So I would hope I would get that in the same manner. So for the consent calendar, I mean, Andre, I have a question for you. I have a lot of questions on the consent calendar items.
You voted to approve the consent calendar.
Like I said, I was not paying attention at the speed of what we're going. I've had to ask repeated times, where are we at?
The mayor asked if anybody wanted to pull items.
Like I said, I, it just went by.
That's up to the mayor. It's not to me.
Okay, so I can do this?
In order to revisit that item, it would take one of the members, at this meeting, it would take one of the members who approved the item to ask for a motion for reconsideration.
So then I need to ask for a motion to reconsider?
It would be one of the members who actually approved the item, per Rosenberg's rules.
Didn't I approve it? Didn't I say yes without knowing?
You could ask to have it reconsidered.
So then I can ask for a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Let the attorney explain to you.
I'm sorry, I'm having a conversation.
She is correct. She can ask and move to have it reconsidered. She can make that motion.
Okay, so if that motion dies, I have council comments and I'm not going to be limited to five minutes, correct?
Depends on what the council does on this agenda tonight.
Well, that's why I'm asking, can I have the opportunity? I have my questions ready and I'm asking to speak. So if I can do a motion to reconsider and if it's not seconded, in council comments, I would go through each agenda that the council has approved for each consent calendar. Because I have a lot of questions on consent calendar.
I understand. The situation right now is you can ask and adopt a motion to reconsider the item. If that doesn't occur, then we move on with the rest of the agenda. There's no decision been made yet on whether or not there's going to be a limitation on council member comments.
So then I can bring that up on council comments I'm asking.
Again, right now, you could bring it up on council member comments, but it's not going to have an impact. You've already voted in the affirmative.
Right. It doesn't matter if it doesn't have an impact. I just have a lot of questions and I have staff here. I'm just making sure that I can do this in council comments and I'm not interrupted, muted, and then everybody walks away. That's all I'm asking.
That's up to the presiding officer, the mayor of the council.
Okay, well, I already filed a complaint with the DA. So if it happens again, they're already watching. Thank you.
Okay, we continue on?
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, there's a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Yes, there was a motion by, oh, I'm sorry.
Are we talking about C? There's a motion on.
D1 is what?
To reconsider C.
Oh, okay.
It was a motion to reconsider the consent calendar. Is there a second on that? No, so we move on to D1.
Do we have a motion on D1?
No, we do not.
I will move approval of item D1.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Negreti.
I have comments on D1. So we're doing this at a speed where you're not allowing me to speak. An immediate vote is being taken and I'm not being asked if there are any council comments. I did not hear that.
Madam Chair, just a point of order. Under Rosenberg's rules, in order to discuss a motion, discuss a topic, the motion has to be made and then seconded and then discussion is invited. That's the rule. So now it's time for discussion. Am I right?
That's correct.
Did I miss something?
No.
Now we can have a discussion.
Andre, last time you said whether it was before or after, that was fine. So we need to get something in writing that really states that because I can go back to the videos and look at before or after.
Discussion typically happens after a motion is on the table, on the dais and has been seconded. Now it's appropriate for council member comments. That's what we're on, on D1.
And just for reference, item D7, our city council policies and procedures, that's one of the items, I think, that would be appropriate to put into a policies and procedures manual because we have had discussion on either side of a motion for years now. But I don't believe they were about to take a vote. I think you maybe misstated or misunderstood what was happening.
Doug, just a, I don't think we need a policy for every single item in Rosenberg's rules that we're going to follow. We've adopted a policy that we're going to follow Rosenberg's rules. That's what we should do. It's very simple and straightforward. We don't need to have policies that itemize the things we're going to follow.
When I wasn't intending to have that discussion yet, just pointing out that some of the things that's being talked about is actually going to be covered under D7.
Pointing out, we don't need a policy.
Mayor, at this time, it would be appropriate to ask for council member comments on D1.
Are there any member comments on item D1?
Yes, I have comments and questions. I realize that this project will be retroactive and I'm just wondering now and hope to get a response as to why it wasn't brought up in February.
I'm not sure what you're talking about as far as it wasn't brought up in February.
We're in item D1, right?
Right.
Okay. If, we've read, we've all read the back material. This is going to be retroactive to March. And this was already in the works. So I'm just wondering if there was a delay, why there was a delay? Why didn't we do everything at one time?
Are you talking about the original award in March of 2015?
No. Should I take some time to pull, where I grabbed this information?
It would help, sure.
Well, I wasn't ready to pull the information. I just know that there's going, is Eric Ray here? I'm sure he would know.
Mr. Ray is on vacation right now. What I can tell you and how these typically work is this is what I would probably consider the second phase of, effectively, a three-phase or three-stage process to get to construction. So what has occurred in the FAA rules for awarding of construction projects, a little bit different, a little bit non-traditional. But the FAA does require the design of all of the work to be done in advance. And then before actually going out to bid and awarding a construction contract, they require for us to do what we're doing right now, which is retain a construction management firm to also provide bid support and make sure that the estimations are independently verified and, in fact, acceptable. So that's effectively what this does. If there's question about reimbursement, it's likely, or retroactive reimbursement is likely due to design-related work that is eligible for reimbursement out of subsequent FAA awards.
Okay. After approval of the engineering consultant goes through, will the RFQ, the request for quote kick in after his or her 18-month contract for phase 1A and 1B is completed?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yes. After approval of the engineer consultant goes through with the request, no, this is concerning the request for quote kicks in after the 18-month contract for phases 1A and 1B is complete, are we going to go through? Because I feel if we have a contract that's already 18 months, why would we revisit it? Although it's stated right here. Should the independent cost estimate reveal that the qualified airport engineering consultant's proposal is not fair and reasonable, SLA staff will request another proposal.
Correct.
But it's a five-year contract. So if you keep reading on, consult it for a period of five-year project years.
Okay.
So if it's a five-year contract, I'm asking, can we go back after 18 months and review and put a request for order, request for quote, even though we've approved a five-year contract?
Yes, and I believe what it's alluding to is bringing on another contractor to do a separate independent verification, separate from this contract.
Well, because right here it says if the proposal is not considered fair and reasonable, SLA staff will then either request another proposal or discharge WSP. So I think that's a different response that I'm getting.
I don't think so.
Well, if we're hiring someone, a consultant, for 18 months, why not keep them if we're already signing a contract for five years? I'm not understanding that part.
Well, the, we actually, the five-year period typically refers to a period of time in which we can actually identify them as eligible to perform services. In fact, when we do RFQs, we select a couple of qualified bidders and make them eligible and available for five years. So I believe that's what the five-year period is speaking to.
Okay, so I was just asking for clarity because the board of directors is being asked to approve $880,000 for this.
I'm going to call the question, please. I think these are educational topics that Ms. Gomez can handle with staff on her own time, please. I'd like to call the question.
Thank you.
There is a motion for approval by Mr. Kennedy with a second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with.
Can you begin to see the lack of transparency you're going to get?
Motion carries with council member Gomez voting no.
We move on to item D2. Construction bids for the Seventh Street Median Desertscape Upgrade. Madam clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the design concept and authorize staff to proceed with obtaining construction bids for the Seventh Street Median Desertscape Upgrade.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a little bit odd for us. Typically, we go to bid without seeking council approval ahead of time. But this is kind of an interesting project that we wanted to get a little bit of input in before we head out to bid. So the boards that are on the side of the room have been in the council offices for some time now. We hope you've all had a chance to take a look at them. I would ask, unless I'm mistaken, Keith, Doug Matthews, to come up and talk about this project a little bit. I believe this has already been to the planning commission for some input. If you could share the planning commission's thoughts and kind of what a go-forward might look like and what, if anything, you're looking for out of the council tonight.
Sure. What were, we took this to planning commission to get their thoughts on the design concept and just provide any feedback. And they were receptive to it. It wasn't a lot of comments, but they liked the design concept and they had a few questions that we addressed satisfactorily. And so we thought the next step would be to bring it to council to see if they were happy with the design concept. If it's something they like or approve of or have a few comments and want us to tweak or change, we certainly can. But the next step would be to complete the construction drawings and just put it out to bid after that. But we didn't want to go forward with all that effort without getting some concurrence from council saying that, you know, they liked the concept of it. We did bring in a design consultant. Kay Kite is here today if you have any technical questions. The process we went through was kind of lengthy from the RFP process to select the consultant to iterations on the design. And then we brought in the planning department to help us out with it because that's more in their ballpark. And ours is on the O&amp;M side. And then we kind of went from there and came up with something we thought was reflective of the area, the desert, Route 66. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Doug, are those two designs or one or?
So that is one design right now. And there's a plan view and then there's a rendering. The second rendering of the walls, it was just to kind of give a better idea of what the walls kind of look like. If you've been to Vegas and along that freeway, you'll see those rusted steel walls along there where they have figures and things like that. That's the type of wall this is with the idea that you would put in some type of cutouts in there that was representative of the area, Route 66, something of that nature. And we're certainly open to suggestions and comments. But it has been talked about extensively between planning staff and public work staff. And the design consultant has been, you know, excellent as far as coming up with ideas and implementing some of the desert-friendly species and drought-tolerant plants and coming up with something that was nice. They tried angular designs. They looked at some curvilinear designs, the Corten walls. We looked at jagged edges, more representing the mountains. We looked at various things to try and tie it to the desert a little bit. And I'm sure Kay could do a much better job explaining the design.
We're approving tonight. What are you exactly asking us to approve?
That you would like to see us go forward with this concept to finalize it and to put it out to bid. That is something you would want to see on the Seventh Street medians.
Actually, just to put it out to bid, correct?
Finalize design and put it out to bid.
Are there plans in the near future to revamp similar elements?
As far as where?
In other words, the restriction of watering ornamental turf on public street medium. Does the city plan to create landscape design such as the one you just pointed out?
We've actually already turned off all the water to our ornamental turf. So that's already taken place in the city. And so the areas where we turned it off, we've been going through and doing designs for them. But the main ones were Green Tree and Seventh Street. There are some in the LMAs that we'll be working on, but those are more funding challenged. So we have to come up with some more innovative ideas on those.
I think one of the approaches staff had, and that's why we actually put this in front of you a couple of weeks ago, really trying to solicit comments and feedback, is I think what we have in front of you is dramatically nice for the community. And if the council is supportive of this type of concept, we envisioned that this perhaps could be a template for future medians once identified. We don't have anything beyond Seventh Street identified, but certainly. We don't have anything uh, beyond Seventh Street identified, but certainly feel proud enough about the design that perhaps this could be a template for future.
A couple of things that, that staff worked on to make sure uh, that they would be as maintenance-free as possible. One, being the rusted metal, it's relatively easy to maintain. Um, we, uh, one of my comments, when it first came to me actually very informally, was I didn't want them so tall as to, you know, potentially become an attractive nuisance for homeless to camp nearby in the shade of or whatever. Um, but then also uh, having the elements as relief uh, makes them somewhat more vandal-proof. Um, in some of our neighborhoods, some of the signs had some figures, you know, posted on them, bolted on them and over time, whether it's kids, whether it's weather, they went missing and suddenly you have a rather blank sign. So having a relief element instead of something attached, uh, it makes it uh, uh, last longer and easier to maintain as a result.
Yeah, just one question. When we, and I think the idea of planting new trees is probably a good idea, cause the ones we've got are stressed and they aren't gonna make it. When we plant, are we gonna plant baby trees or are we gonna plant full grown?
We'll put as big as we can afford. So, I mean, we'll try and get some larger trees and what gallon would you think, Kay?
The only reason I'm asking is I did a tree planting in my parking lot in my office in San Bernardino. Six, uh, kind of a row of six ficus trees to give the parking lot a park feel. They were stolen six times. So whatever we do.
We're not gonna plant our trees in San Bernardino.
That is not the point. What people will steal is just unbelievable. So they need to be pretty substantial when they go in the ground. A collar around them with a stake and a chain driven into the ground wouldn't hurt.
We, we've had similar issues in the L Mads where we would go plant them and by the end of the next week, they were all gone. So then we had to do them a few at a time and sneak them in there so they weren't as attractive, you know, so they weren't stealing them. We just had to get a little bit more creative and work with PD and just keep an eye on them.
Has there been discussion on how we're gonna use the cash for grass that totaled fifty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars?
It, it'll be applied directly towards this project. Just right off, you know, it'll be taken right off the top.
For other medians as well, or is that?
No, this is, it's specifically you apply for the certain area and then you get approved. So we did that quite a while ago for Green Tree and for Seventh Street and that was the award. It was a dollar a square foot.
Thank you.
I think Jim Cox is the landscape designer around here, not me, but I liked them. I thought they really looked good. What'd you think?
The, my only comment regarding the trees. Every few years, we plant trees and we always call in tree experts. And so far, they've never gotten it right. I'm hoping this time they will actually plant trees that grow and thrive in the desert.
Yeah, and, and part of it's our watering. We do have a standard now with some deep watering cans that go down to, to help promote deeper uh, root growth. Um, so it doesn't affect our, our streets and our pavement or, or, or concrete. Um, but trees were selected by the consultant and so it certainly wasn't staff picking them out.
No, 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 it wasn't the staff. Uh, I, years ago, the city applied for and got a substantial grant to put different kinds of trees in the parks, golf courses, dividers, including those trees that you're looking at. Those were to be monitored and reported on which ones thrive and which ones do not in order that the city could adopt a official tree or a street tree. And uh, I recently asked a staff person and there's been no monitoring for years. Um, so that effort was by the wayside. Uh, the official tree of the city is one of the worst trees you can plant here, which is a little small berry.
Yeah, I think there's some-
Came about after a long study and paying consulting fees.
You're kidding. I didn't know we had an official tree of the city. Thought it was a Joshua tree.
Oh, yeah, sure do. Yes, you do. So I'm hoping that if, when we go through this, that we have a tree that will thrive here, that actually will stay in the ground and, and.
If, I'd hate to put it on the-
I thought it was the green tree.
There's a Joshua tree in this seal, so I assumed it was a Joshua. Wow, no, Keith just said that. I'm not gonna steal his thunder there.
Um, we are concerned about the existing health of the trees, so we've certainly identified as a scope of this work, those, those trees are likely to come out. Uh, we believe uh, the root system is in search of water. Uh, they're probably traversing closer to the top of the ground, potentially creating more hazard to the street, maybe more susceptible to wind. Hate to put Kay on the spot, um, but she's probably the most knowledgeable between um, us all as to the type of trees and probably can talk a lot more intelligently about the trees if you so like.
And, and uh, the trees they're using here, a lot of them have been established in the L Mads for quite a few years now, the crepe myrtle and certain other ones, but I'll, I'll defer to Kay.
Okay, the um, trees that we chose to replace the ones in the median are um, more natural to this area of the world being the high desert, not the low desert. We understand that there is a, quite a different climate change between the high desert and the low desert. Um, they have found success in other areas similar to Victorville that get the snow in the wintertime sometimes and get the um, large heat in the summertime. And so we definitely, we went through, we made sure to research and make sure that all of these trees will succeed in an area like Victorville and we have found, we have found them in private properties and other developments where they have worked and they have succeeded in Victorville. And as for the existing trees on the median, because they were um, established with grass and overhead spray that didn't go down very far, all of their roots are very surface and they don't, they weren't trained to deep root. And so with the turning off of the water, they don't have any access to water and they're getting stressed out and you can see it on a lot of the trees. They are dying. And some of them may not be showing it yet, but they could show it in the future. So we're recommending that you remove those trees because they are high-water users anyway and replace them with something more appropriate to a desert.
In case I missed it, can you tell us the type of trees that are being proposed to be planted?
Um, they're mesquites. The Chilean mesquite and the thornless, um, I think it's the Chilean mesquite is the one we're proposing and the crepe myrtles also.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see.
I think just in closing, the final part of why we brought it to you today, uh, seeking comments and also seeking direction is, is a part of our budget preparation as well. We're trying to decide, do we include a construction uh, component in our upcoming budget? Right now, we currently have a placeholder. I believe it's in the gas tax fund which we haven't had an opportunity, but we will at the next budget hearing or budget workshop to talk through with you. We do have a placeholder in, in that fund um, as an expense. Obviously, if the council doesn't want to do this, then we can certainly free that uh, money up for other uh, gas tax-related purposes. Uh, of course, if the council desires to proceed, we'll keep that line item in the proposed budget uh, with the recommendation to proceed.
A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the general concept. Have them go to bid and I'm expecting they'll bring back
Second.
A firmer design before everything's finished.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I believe D three is out of order. Uh, this issue, according to Robert, uh, Rosenberg's rules, this issue was resolved last month. The only way it can be brought back is if one of the council members who was on the prevailing side wants to bring it back. I understand Ms. Gomez wants people to speak on it and we have public comment and that's perfectly appropriate time for him to speak, but I think D three has no place on the agenda.
Councilmember Kennedy, you have unfortunately provisions in your municipal code that allows a council member to put any item back on an agenda at a subsequent meeting that unfortunately trumps Rosenberg's. One of the reasons why I think we have item D seven further on in the agenda where we need to get all of our policies put together in one place, because we have inconsistencies right now between the municipal code and Rosenberg's.
Item D three, continued discussion and possible action regarding translation services. Uh, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council further discuss and possibly act upon one of the options for providing translation services for City Council meetings.
And I do have one card, uh, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm not going for Planning Commission this time. I'm done with that. Anyways, I'm talking about the voting about translation services. I was here at the last mea- uh, last meeting and what they were discussing was just, it's absurd. There's some comments that were made, um, uh, said those people decided not to learn English. Language of the U.S. is English. I'd rather use the money to pay the lights for the little leaguers. Another person said, we are elected to make decisions for you guys. And another person was saying, we're gonna come across as the same thing. It shouldn't be on, it shouldn't be discussed at all. I was expecting saying, well, you know what? Let's make a decision. Let's, let's find out exactly how many people really need this. I guess that is what you guys, you're, the, the council is there to see the needs of the city. If it needs it, then it should, uh, uh, some kind of study should be made to see if it warrants that. How many Hispanic people are here? How many Asian people? How many Japanese, Filipino people? Maybe it's not necessary, but at least open the investigation to see if it's warranted or not. That's all. So that way, everybody can go home happy. And not just because one person decided, we should not discuss it, because I said so. Uh, I don't think that's the correct way. That's not the democratic way. That's not the way, the reasons you guys were elected. Uh, you guys are there to serve for us and we're asking, whether it's one person or a thousand people were asking for a, a certain service for a certain com- part of the community. It's not our decision or their decision that they decided not to speak English. Sometimes they have two, maybe three jobs and they're kind of busy. They couldn't get mom or pop to pay for their college. But it's very important also to make that investigation, that study, to see if it's warranted. If it's needed. If it's not needed, well, then we move on. But just kill it just because somebody has an opinion or made a decision way before this was presented? Not because of need, because of beliefs. And I don't want to say that ugly word, but I don't think that should be the case here in this thing with, it's not really that expensive. There's other factors that can be done. There's already technology that you can buy a certain item and it'll translate it for you. That's all. So up, up, up there in the subtitles, it can be translated to any language you want. Thank you very much.
That was the only card that I had. Any comments from council members?
Yes, when I found out that my ability as a council member would be usurped by a majority vote, I said, I'm gonna add this to the agenda. So that's why it's on the agenda. I added this item in order to provide the community at large to be able to one, at least one last time to be able to interact with council and for council to be able to respond without the Brown Act being thrown on anybody's ground. And finally, I'd like to remind everyone that during the topics discussion, Councilmember Negretti expressed concerns about those translation services and Mayor Pro temp Cox supported a longstanding city approach to offer translation services only as an as-needed basis. Thank you.
One else? A motion? Made a motion?
It's only for a discussion. If we can vote, I mean, it's not gonna happen, but yeah, I would like to have translation services researched to see if there's a need. So, so moved. Not that it's gonna be seconded.
These items only for discussion?
I just made a motion.
It, yes.
It was only for discussion, no motion is required?
There, there was a motion made. We should see if there's a second for the motion.
There is no second and the motion dies for lack of a second.
Now we move on to item D four. Uh, Planning Commissioner qualifications. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the qualifications for an appointment to the Planning Commission be defined more specifically to assist council members in the future with the vetting of their nominees to the Planning Commission.
I don't have any cards. Is this also for just discussion or do we take a motion on this one here?
It could be up to Councilmember Gomez. This is her item.
I'd like to speak on my item.
Go ahead.
When I added this to the agenda, I hope to get more of a narrow framework to provide direction for future appointments. I'd like to remind everyone that Councilmember Negretti stated that a planning commissioner who has been actively involved in the community for some time and has some understanding of real estate and land use issues would suit for an appointment. There's no reason for me to believe that my colleagues would argue against this. So if there's no plausible discussion ensues with this, I'd like to send this item back after council discussion, if so, if it so does occur to city staff to come back with a finding and a report of other models and how it is that the qualifications are there. So that's gonna be my motion.
So would you restate?
I don't need a motion for that. I'm just asking, really what I'm asking is, how are other cities doing it? We've had council already state what are some of the things that are needed. So in or, in order for future to stop, you know, probably not going through four or five or seven different planning commissioners, if we have something in writing, it would help individuals that come at the dais and there's no arguing back and forth. So I'm trying to prevent that.
You're asking staff to report back to the council to see if there's some, what other, what other cities are doing, basically?
Right, something that council can adopt.
For that, for that research, typically we would have a, a motion and direction from the council.
We have been appointing uh, planning commissioners in this city since nineteen sixty-one with the guidance that's in the policies or something like it. It's been adequate for oh, these many years, was that fifty-five years? It was enough. I talked to previous council members and his previous city manager and nobody can remember a council member who was actually, or a planning commissioner who was actually a, a proposed ever being not approved. This is an absolute first. I don't think anybody this has just never been a problem. I don't, I think any specifics that we draw into that uh, in the way of guidance creates limitations. Sure, as we list ten, they'll, they'll turn out there should have been an eleventh. Or one of the ten really doesn't fit. I think the guidance that's in the standard in our, our policies today is absolutely adequate and I see no reason to change it.
Um, in my discussions, I also thought that there was not one ever in the city who had denied a planning commissioner. Unfortunately, it hasn't been never. There was another substitute that actually won and got a no. So I'm sorry that it was a never and it wasn't the first time for me in that discussion that I had. Mr. Rothschild had something of that regard, so I'd just like to clarify that. And then, yeah, you're right, fifty-five years. Community is changing a lot and looks like council is gonna start representing a community base, you know, as the years come forth. So I appreciate your comment. I would just like to facilitate for the next individual that would happen to come through my shoes, not to face what they did face, cause if you look at the municipal code and everything, the regulations, that's why I had the prior three appointees, but they didn't meet the personal council members ideologies of what it is for a planning commission. So I figured that would kind of ease into the future, but if that's not what's sought, I'm just saying that that's what I was trying to prevent for a future council member to come in office. Oh, and also the procedures, it's interesting because we were just in a workshop and we didn't take a vote for anything to come forth. But yet if I suggest something and have it for um, Robert, Mr. Robertson to add to the agenda, all of a sudden I need a majority vote. Maybe we need to explain how that works because just a couple of hours ago, someone suggested, Mr. Cox had suggested something, um, people kind of agreed, yeah, nodded and laughed it off immediately. Very savvy, Mr. Robertson was like, well, yeah, we'll show it up on the next presentation. There was no vote taken, so I'm just asking for consistency here. So if that is the case, I would ask that from today, this date forward, we have a sense of consistency, so it doesn't look or appear to the public of consistency, so it doesn't look or appear to the public or to council members that there is some sense of bias being occurred or anything like that. So I'm gonna ask for, from now on, to have that.
Are we still on item D4 or have you changed the subject?
Well, we were asked to have a motion. And what I was saying in terms of D4, which is very relevant, Mayor, is that we just had a couple of hours ago where there was no motion sought. So I'm seeking consistency, not because Council Member Gomez speaks. I'm just seeking consistency at the dais, so we can start working together. That might help in the future.
I've been consistent with every council member that an individual council member can't give direction to staff to go out and do research. If we have information available, then we provide it. That's something that I would have done with any council member, whether that's you, Mr. Cox, Mayor Garcia, or anybody. The budget workshop that we had, we were seeking input, seeking direction, seeking comment, so it's entirely appropriate to do that in an open meeting and to take that direction as part of the open meeting. I'm confused as to why you think that's inconsistent.
I'm also confused, because when someone at the council suggests, "Please, can we do this?" And you say, "Can we do a presentation?" And we don't take a vote. And then when I ask for something and it says there needs to be a vote, I don't see consistency. So maybe there has to be stuff laid out. That way, there is no, maybe I'm confusing the situation, so I thank you for clarifying that. But let's have something in writing, so it could be pointed back.
We have something in writing. It's called the municipal code and it very clearly says, "A single council member cannot direct the staff or myself." We were in a budget workshop with all five of you present, seeking input on the future budget workshop, so it's entirely appropriate for us to make those changes. That's why we were having the workshop, was to ask those questions. What you're asking for is additional research that's outside of what's already been adopted and approved and directed by the entire city council. I have done that with every single council member sitting on this dais when they've asked me for something. In the past, I would have asked them, "Would you like me to place that item on the agenda? I can't do that level of research simply based on one council member asking for it." That has happened with all five of you and any council member in the past.
So when I asked for research for the Spanish translation, we didn't take that to a vote and you went ahead and did it. So I'm getting, I'm just, like I'm saying, it's just confusing to know what is a vote, what isn't a vote. That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus. I'm trying to understand what is selective and what is not. I understand you said there's the municipal code. I just asked also through email to have two agenda items. You didn't put them on the agenda for future, because you knew somehow that the majority would not want what I was putting.
That's not true. Madam Mayor, is there a question I could call? Is there a motion I could, so I could call the question? Is there a motion?
I just need to clarify, was that a motion, Ms. Gomez, to have staff conduct further research on the translation services?
That's what I had asked.
Okay, then there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There is no second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
And for clarification, I'd be happy to share my emails with the entire council with you, that I shared with you, Ms. Gomez, so that they know exactly what's happening with those two agenda items you requested.
Well, if I can pull it on my phone, I do it right now and start reading it too.
I continue on with item D5. Time limit on council member comments. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council impose a five-minute time limit on council member comments during the reports from council members section of the city council agenda.
So we're clear. This doesn't, this is not a time limit when we're having a discussion of an agenda item. This is only in council member comments.
Correct, yes.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negrete. All those in favor?
Aye. Or we take a vote? Please, let's keep consistency. This is why I keep saying what I'm saying. There is a lack of inconsistency, so we can all come together and understand that. That's why I didn't interrupt, because I knew we were gonna be consistent, or so I thought. So please, if we can have consistency, understand it's a little bit difficult. I get it. Do I have the floor so I can make comment now before a vote?
I do have a card I failed to call. I have one card. Maggie?
Couple of things, I'm gonna get to that issue, but a couple of things that I caught in Council Member Gomez's comments about the planning commission is, it's not about...
Maggie, I have to stop. You're only speaking on this item at this point in time. If you submit another card, you can talk into public comment, but this is about the five limit, five-minute time limit only at this point in time.
I misunderstood. Thank you, Doug. Yes, I think we need a five-minute time limit, because in my opinion, when the mayor bangs a gavel, the meeting is over. And from this minute forward, or the last meeting I was here two weeks ago, the minute that gavel drops, Your Honor, I'm out of here. And I would suggest that, let me rephrase that, I would like to humbly suggest that the other members of the dais leave the dais as well, as they did somewhat the last time, as well as the members of the audience, to use the city's time to thank everybody and their brother three generations back or forward about things that are not necessarily relevant to this business of the city and/or could be read on the city's website. I don't think it's appropriate for any member to use council time and citizen time to hear their personal thank yous. I'm very highly, since day one, when Council Member Gomez came on board, highly, highly offended and disgusted with that kind of behavior. I could go on, but I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Are there any questions or comments by council members?
Major Pro temp Cox has submitted time limits on council member comments. The role to limit council members' speaking time seems to be directed at Council Member Gomez. Putting limits on discussion reduces government transparency. This type of sanction slash soft censure is a violation of council's commitment to the community for transparency. There is no reason why a majority should vote on reducing transparency. Residents need to become aware of city business. Although some may argue that the transparency is still going on, currently, the council does not hold workshops to speak on length about meetings, decorum, and professionalism or Brown Act rules and regulations. We should start thinking about implementing more workshops, so that the public is better informed and the council can actually discuss items that are affecting us at the moment. Thank you.
One else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We had a meeting not too long ago, that at the end of the meeting, or near the end of the meeting, Council Member Gomez began speaking and we saw members of the audience leave. Or I felt, since we restrict people to three minutes at the end of the agenda, we ought not have the council less than three minutes, but no more than four, finally put five on here. But after a long meeting, we will have 25 minutes for the city council members to talk about, I don't know what. If you'll notice, we're coming to another agenda item on policies for the council, because it ought to be directly related to city business. Reading from city documents is not city business that people can look up. Thanking people because an individual council person, I think they can do that personally. It's almost as if the politicking continues and we're still running for office. I think it's improper. I really got criticized that we didn't speak up sooner. After eight minutes, I asked if I could interrupt, and I did and felt at that point, even though I was told I was rude, my apologies if I was rude. I don't want to be rude to council members. I want us to work as a team. But there is no reason that council members, at the end of a long meeting, should have any reason to talk more than five minutes. If we adopt this as a policy, and apparently we have, gonna be put in the policy form, the attorneys to be sure and direct us if it needs to be put in an ordinance form, but we're here as a team to conduct the city's business, not to promote individual self, such as just wrong and sorry we even have to talk about this, but the time has come. We have no choice but to address it.
I'd like to respond to your comments.
Yeah, I'd like to just add a couple of things. I don't believe that a council meeting is ever the place for a council member to get involved in self-promotion, drawing all the attention to himself or herself. I just think that's completely inappropriate. I think anybody sitting in this meeting, or any meeting for the last three or four months, will agree that the one thing Council Member Gomez has not been denied is the right to speak. Personally, I find that my comments have more effect if I make them directly, clearly, and briefly. But rambling on and on generally doesn't convince anybody of much of anything. So I think a five-minute limit is absolutely appropriate.
I'd like to respond to council members' comments briefly. This also happened to Angela Vias, so it's not the first time. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Council Member Gomez voting no.
Item D6. Requested city council policy. Placing items on the agenda by council members. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council consider re-adopting a policy concerning the placement of items on the agenda by individual council members.
I do have one card on this item, even though he already spoke, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Yes, I'm kind of curious about what reconsider, re-adopting of the policy is of this suggestion. Is it gonna be within closed doors? You guys are gonna find out what you guys can talk about the city. If one of us recommend something to you and if it doesn't pass muster in your room, in the back room, then we're not gonna be able to hear it up here. So it's gonna be voted on even before it reaches us to decide whether it's pertinent for us or not? Is it some sort of censor or censure to a person or a group that are following up on needs of the community? That's what we need to know. Tell you the truth, I'm already getting a translation service, Blanca, in which she's asking all these questions. You guys have been up there more than five minutes, some maybe up to 16 years. So you guys know what the policies are. It's automatic, the legal jargon, but we don't. But we're getting translated to, so we understand now, so we can go along with it and say, "Oh, we understand now." I know it's, not all of us are lawyers or professional people, but it's very important. Now then, this re-establishing the policy, I understand why you're going there. But also, for the people, are we gonna allow it for you guys to decide what we're gonna hear? Because a little group, three against one, or four against one, or three against two, is gonna decide what's good for us. I don't think you guys are there to decide for us, unless you guys own the country or invaded it, but it's still democracy here and it has to be voted on. And we are still the people that decide. And we elected you in good faith. You got elected in good faith to represent us and to guide us into what's needed in the city. So please explain what the re-adopting of the policy is gonna entail. What are the reasons that this is, I know we understand the reasons, but what do you think it's gonna benefit the proposals of certain not-so-popular subjects that are needed? So only the majority of the popular subjects are gonna be brought up to everybody's attention. But those subjects that are not liking to two or three people are not gonna be ever be presented up here. So that's one of my key questions on D6. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for educational purposes, when this item was, when this policy was adopted back in 2011 and through 2000, beginning or so of 2014, there was an item on the agenda, every agenda, towards the end, just before council member comments, that listed items for future agendas or something along those lines. And it gave the council a reminder and an individual opportunity to bring up issues that they wanted to be placed on future agendas. And there was simply a consensus taken. It was not a formal vote, just a simple verbal consensus that, yes, council members would like that placed on a future agenda. And then staff would put it on the agenda for discussion purposes at that point. So it does add a couple of weeks to our very lean process, but it's something we've done and handled well in the past. It's not something that would take place behind closed doors. That would actually be a violation of the Brown Act to do that, so...
We don't conduct city business behind closed doors. We conduct all of it here on the dais. As a council, as a group, I think we believe we, the five of us, can best judge what items are the business of the city. And when we had this policy in place, it was because we had one council member at that time who was determined to dominate the agenda by putting every single individual item that person wanted on the agenda, on the agenda. And the rest of us got tired of it and the rest of us said, "There needs to be a majority rule here." When a majority of us believe this is viable, valid city business, then we're gonna agree to put it on the agenda. Once we adopted that policy, there were very few items that we refused to agendize, but there were some. What we don't believe in this country is a dictatorship on this dais. So I think we do not agree that one council member should dominate the agenda. So the rest of us have a right to say when we think an item simply is not the city's business. And if we don't agree to putting it on the agenda, then it doesn't go on the agenda. That's the nature of that policy in the past. That's the policy that we're gonna adopt tonight or we're gonna propose, and I hope everybody agrees to adopt it. As a council, we'll decide what goes on the agenda. Madam Mayor, may I speak? If you go back and look at the policy adopted by the city council, I don't know if it's a resolution or what it is, but this council, long ago, adopted Rosenberg's Rules of Order to Conduct Meeting. And, you know, if you want a copy of it, I'll give you a copy of it. When there is an item before the city council and it's been debated, there must be closure. When you allow an individual council person that lost to put it on the agenda and then put it on the agenda and then put it on the agenda, that's certainly not the best interest of the public. It's simply to cause a problem, bring attention to themselves, and this council gets to decide what's on the agenda, because I, when I read this and I saw the agenda that we had an item going to come back, my comment to the city manager was, "We adopted Rosenberg's Rules. This is a violation of the rule." And he said that he had spoken with the city attorney and the city attorney said, "However, there's an ordinance that is contrary to this and that the ordinance adopted by this body rules. Therefore, I ask, do the city council, do you want to re-adopt the policy that items on the agenda is with the approval of the council?" And that would prohibit any individual here to go to the manager, directing him to put items on the agenda or the same item, meeting after meeting after meeting. You know, it just, I don't, I think it was for divisive purposes. I don't think it served any purpose. If the city council wants to continue, they certainly can, but this is a democratic process here by the people that the public elected. And if it's the city council's belief that we should go back to that item that says that the city council will determine what's on the agenda, rather than the normal course of business, which the manager or the department has put on there in order to conduct the city's business, that will require an ordinance change, apparently. there in order to conduct the city's business, that will require an ordinance change, apparently, which will require two more cuts at it before it gets adopted, because there would be a public hearing, an introduction of the ordinance, and then adoption. If not, and we allow any councilmember to put any item they want to, and we're not here to conduct the public business, every councilmember can go to the manager and say, here's 20 items. I want them on the agenda. And we'll be adjourning at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, every meeting, to hear every item over and over again. You have to accept the fact that you lost, and it's over with. And that only happens when this City Council has the debate, has the discussion in a democratic way, individuals get to speak, and the council votes. But finality is finality. There has to be some way that this council makes the determination of the business that they're going to discuss in order to even discuss the business for the benefit of the citizens. If it's dominated by one or two councilpersons, no matter whom they are, the city will never get to the business that the public expects us to address. So, that's why it's on the agenda. It's not changing it now, because my understanding is the policy can't override the ordinance. If it's the City Council's belief that they should have the say-so, then it goes back to the manager and the attorney, and they prepare the ordinance, have the hearing, and that's what will occur in the future. If not, it remains simply the way it is. And even though we've adopted Rosenberg's, we can't follow it.
Thank you. I still have one card that I haven't called out, and even though she already spoke, but this is a different item.
That's out of order.
Maggie Martin.
I need the mayor needs training. That is so out of order. You first call public comment, and then you do councilmembers.
It's being talked over. Yeah, there we go. Good evening again, Council and Your Honor. You know, I got to tell you something. I have a lot of experience in previous employment, working with vast numbers of mixed racial groups, in a prison for six years, as a reserve deputy for five years, working for the city, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it was something the gentleman, I forgot his name, that spoke earlier on this issue about, and it elicited the comment from Councilwoman Gomez about, it happened to Angela Vias, and implying, and not so vaguely either, that if you don't let a Hispanic person have it their way, or have their say, then you're a racist. I've been called a racist, not necessarily directly, but it's been alluded to. And I always am quick to remind people, I was married to Hispanic. I have a Hispanic granddaughter. So, I resent that highly from whoever the gentleman is behind me, that, you know, and here's what I've concluded after many years, again, of vast experience. When there's nothing else to throw down, let's just throw down the race card. And I am so sick of that, I could absolutely puke. I really am. I'm sick of it. I don't see your color, your color, your color, your race, your name, your name, your name. What we, we want to talk about togetherness and united, you can't unite when you're throwing down the race card. And that's a constant divisive, by its mere nature, tactic. And I'm sick of it. And I don't really want to hear that anymore in this council chamber. And if I do, I'm going to get as direct, maybe more so, and irate than I am now. It's ridiculous. It's like the kid who doesn't get his way is going to stamp his foot and have a meltdown or a tantrum. Come on, people, get a clue. Just get a freaking clue, will you, that that kind of comments don't unite, they divide. And I'm tired of hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
I think you still have councilmember comments. I think there are still some councilmember comments on this item.
There is. No, I'm the last one to comment.
Well, you want to continue the meeting?
Well, if you don't know how to run it, I think Mr. Cox should run it. So, then that means I get time now to speak, or you're going to put me off a little longer? Is that the silent treatment?
Appropriate for Councilmember Gomez to make comments. There's no motion yet at this point.
Go ahead.
Okay. I believe that we need a new mayor to direct. She needs a lot of education on how to run this meeting. When she wasn't here, when Mayor Cox ran that meeting, it was smooth, absolutely no arguing. Next time, let's elect a mayor that actually knows how to run a meeting. I'm sorry, but this is out of order. Other thing that I need to add is Rosenberg's Rule. Yes, Mr. Cox, can you give an example of the reoccurring agenda items that were consistently put? Because I'm trying to figure out what was that that was consistently occurring. Another thing is, in regards to the council policies that have been added by the majority, we're giving a lot of power to the manager, a lot. When we say we're going to vote on a majority, and it doesn't come in front here so that we vote on it, I've known people to go to the manager, and the manager or the city clerk puts stuff on the agenda. I think that's what, that's what essentially is going to end up happening. So, I don't know if someone can explain the process thus far, and how we get items on the agenda before this item goes to a vote.
I thought I did that earlier. Would you like me to repeat it?
Would you please repeat it? I appreciate that.
Certainly. If this policy is adopted, assuming it's not in conflict with the municipal code, which I heard for the first time tonight, considering we had it in place for three years, and that issue didn't come up, but assuming this policy is adopted and adding that caveat that it's not in conflict, the way it worked prior was there was an item under what would be the E section that is titled, was titled, Presentation of Agenda Items for Upcoming City Council Meetings. And it was, used to be right before council comments, if I remember correctly. And councilmembers would routinely bring up an issue that they had, and simply get a verbal approval from a majority. It wasn't a formal vote. It wasn't something that was typically formal at all, in fact. And then we would put the item on the next agenda, which typically is two weeks later, not for discussion during this item, but to actually discuss at that future meeting. So, let's say you wanted to discuss, I don't know, painting all the stop signs blue. You would say, I would like to discuss painting all the stop signs blue. If the council agreed to discuss that, that discussion would take place at the next meeting, not when it comes up. That was a little bit of a frustration that we ran into, was people would have a hot issue and want to discuss it while the request is being made. But ultimately, then that item is agendized for the next meeting, two weeks later, for the actual discussion and possible direction to city staff. So, if you watch one of the meetings sometime between February of 11 and February of 14, you'll probably see it happen on a fairly regular basis, right at the tail end of the meeting. In fact, you can click on the, that agenda item and see the way it worked. It actually worked very smoothly. I do recall, not to pick on Mr. D. Mordowski, but I think the key issue that caused the adoption of the policy in the first place was Councilmember Vias went through several meetings, asking that his contract be put on the agenda for review, for termination. I'm not sure exactly what it was, fairly ugly back then. And that's, I think, was the flashpoint, if you will, to this, for this policy being adopted in the first place.
And by the way, Mr. Robinson, this policy itself is not in conflict with municipal code. It's the item where you bring back an item previously discussed, item, I think it was D five, that it would be in conflict. This item's not in conflict.
Where ordinance is out of sync.
Correct.
So, if, because I know it's going to come up, if the council adopts this policy tonight, or reenacts it, whatever it's called, when would it be effective? Councilmember Gomez did previously ask for two items for the May 16 meeting, and I indicated to her in the email that we have not put that agenda together, and that my guess was that this policy would be adopted. And if so, I recommended that she bring these up, bring those two items up, so that we can place them on the May 16 agenda. Because if, my understanding is if this policy is in effect, based on one councilmember requesting it, we could not place those items on the agenda.
So, this item is so that the City Council consider re-adopting a policy concerning the placement of items.
Are you thinking about it?
Go ahead.
He'd asked you a question, and I was waiting for the response.
I'm just curious. If it's adopted, maybe I'll wait and see.
It's up to the council. If they want to make it effective immediately, it'd be effective immediately.
Okay.
So, effective immediately means I already put it on the agenda, and from this day forward, it would push?
That's the dispute that Councilmember Gomez brought up earlier, is I indicated to her that because we haven't finalized that agenda.
Right. Then it would be appropriate for those items to be grandfathered in, the discussion of those to be grandfathered.
Thank you.
I therefore put on the agenda.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you for bringing that up. That was my only dispute. Thank you.
I could feel a question coming later tonight or tomorrow morning about those items, and I wanted to make sure we had very clear legal direction.
And on January, I'm sorry, I'm not finished with my comments. Of course. On January, I'm sorry, it was on January 4, 2011, that the discussion ensued, and it was on January 18, 2011, that it was passed. And I know that because I called Carol Lee, because I was trying to look up the information myself. So, I wanted to make sure I said that. I believe that each councilmember should continue to place stuff on the agenda. As a matter of fact, I placed an agenda item, E one, recognition from city councilmembers, before this policy was even conceived. And it's not on the agenda now. And I was seeking direction from the attorney on how that would play out, because it's no longer on the agenda. So, that to me says, once this vote comes across, there's no need to put E one. But that E one was what grandfathered in. So, I just want to make that clarification. So, if that agenda item can stick to where it was, and then if council decides to bring E one and vote it out, that's not a problem, as long as we are consistent. That's all I'm asking, with consistency.
Yeah, I'll definitely seek legal advice for the next agenda on that item, as well as the other two that you previously requested.
All right, thank you. And did council conduct a serial meeting with the manager for the manager to get the majority of E one off the agenda? Any chance?
No, it actually took place during our meeting last time.
During open session?
During the open session last time, yes. I think a majority of the council made it very clear that they did not want that item.
Right, that's the express version, right? Not the voted on. Right, they expressed it. It was not a vote. Is that what we're saying?
I think it was pretty clear that they did not want that item, yes.
Well, again, I'm just seeking consistency. So, if there was no vote, I'm just understanding that, yes, I do understand that it was clear without a vote that that did happen. I'm just, again, seeking clarity, because I'm going to ask for that. But thank you so much, though. The other thing.
I won't seek clarity, but it's unclear to me, so we can move on.
Yeah, it's clear for me that it was understood, that it wasn't liked. There was no vote for that, and that's all I needed to understand. The majority vote and placing items on the agenda wields too much power to the manager. I, as a councilmember, asked the manager to place a thing on, something on the agenda, and the manager does that, then that might be, we don't have to bring it to a general vote. So, are we going to add something to the items here that says, like, E three, anything that councilmembers would like to ask or add? Can we do that, so that clarifies it, so we're not arguing back and forth and overhearing each other? An item like something of that nature? So, the mayor can go and say, is there, does someone want to put an item? Someone moves it, and it gets a vote, and it gets voted down? That would create clarity?
So, if we adopt this policy, if you adopt this policy, there'd be an item on the agenda that's entitled Presentation of Agenda Items for Upcoming City Council Meetings. You could then ask for an item to be on an upcoming city council meeting. And there's a verbal nod, a vote, a yes. It's not a formal vote. And if it receives that consensus, then we would place it on the next meeting, which is usually about two weeks later.
And so, you're expressing that I would seek a formal vote, just for my understanding and clarity's sake, to understand that that's not voted in. So, that's just a suggestion that I'm asking for that. I don't like this placing limits, this agenda item, because I've already seen and felt the us versus they. And I agree with policy where everything that appears on the agenda, on the agenda, should be a majority vote. That's fine. That would give us, you know, that would give someone too much power, and I don't think we want anyone going and trying to add something to the agenda. I'm hoping no one's going to come to you, and you'll put something on the agenda for their behalf.
If they do that, I would recommend that they bring that up during that item. That happened very regularly during those three years.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
One.
Are we ready for a motion?
One comment, please, Madam Mayor. There was a reference that Councilmember Vias experienced, yes, this policy of putting items on the agenda by the councilmembers, two, 15, 11. I became the mayor December 12. For the next two years, Councilmember Vias set immediately to my right. If there was any criticism about that, I know nothing about it. I didn't have a problem. She was a good councilperson during that time. What happened before, I'm, do you want to speak to, I don't want to speak to, because I wasn't here. So, if she has a problem that you're now submitting, I'd like to hear about it, because I, it went very smoothly during the two years that I was the mayor, and I appreciate councilmen working together as a team.
Just for clarity's sake, Mr. Cox, you were actually the city manager when this policy was adopted.
It's up to the council to adopt the policy, not the manager.
Right, right. It's a council policy.
I'm only speaking when I'm in a policymaking position.
No, no, no.
As the manager, I did what the majority of the council said, which is exactly what a manager should do.
Are we ready? I'll make a motion. Is there a motion?
There is not.
I don't think there's a motion. Do you want to make the motion?
I will make that motion.
And this takes effect now, since it's been agendized?
To take effect now, it's desperately needed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez opposed.
Item D seven, City Council Policies and Procedures. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council give direction to staff and the city attorney to prepare a Policies and Procedures Manual for Councilmembers.
Since I placed this on the agenda, if you, if I may, I was aware that the City Council many years ago had a policy manual for the council and a policy manual for staff. I'm not sure what's happened. You go along for a long time, and it's not needed. Recently, I got a copy of some other cities, and find that other cities do adopt, quite in some in depth, some not so much, on policies that govern a lot of things. But it would appear that where they've adopted either Robert's Rules or Rosenberg Rules, they've also amended ordinance not to be in conflict. And rather than try to go through and address each one as they come up, we can simply ask other cities, if the City Council agrees and directs, get a copy of those different rules, pass them out to the city councilmembers. All the councilmembers would have an input, and then we would adopt those policies, if the council agree, and have a procedural manual, so that we all know what the rules are, and we can all be in step with those rules. It's for discussion and a possible recommendation from councilmembers. It's clear that we need to re-look at our policies and procedures.
Agreed.
Anyone else? No?
Yes, I have council comments, too. I have comments for this item. The city of firsts is what the city of Victorville is known for. In the history of the city of Victorville, we saw firsthand, March 21, 2017, the first of its kind, censure. Discussion and possible action regarding censure process submitted by Councilmember Eric Negretti. On March 14, Councilmember Kennedy motions to refer this item to the city attorney to see what else could be done, and has been done in other cities. A memorandum to all councilmembers. At the March 21, this is from our city attorney that I'm reading right now to all of you. At the March 21, 2017, City Council member, City Council meeting, the city of Victorville council referred the censure process, item D 11, to the city attorney's office for research and recommendation and further requests at the April 4, 2017 meeting, that we prepared a, that we prepare a policy.
a policy addressing public record on personal communication devices following the recent Supreme Court decision. This memorandum provides a status update on the referrals requested. The requested research with respect to the censure process is ongoing and our final recommendation forthcoming. However, our initial inquiries have revealed that cities have approached the censure process in various ways, both by ordinance and resolution. Furthermore, the censure process often appears as part of much more larger set of rules, commonly known as council norms and procedures, council codes of conduct, or council policies and procedures manual, which are adopted by a council to address all aspects of the conduct of its business and activities in holistic manner. The topics covered in these sets of rules include, without limitation, ethics, meeting decorum, parliamentary procedures, internal organization, committee and commissions appointments, interactions with staff, media contacts, and numerous other administrative matters. Some even address the use of personal electronics. Many of Victorville's rules governing the conduct of council meetings and parliamentary procedures are found on the municipal code, some portions of which have not been updated for decades. Given the current circumstances, it may be prudent to address the censure process as part of the necessary municipal code revisions and possibly consider a consolidation of various current existing council policies together with new ones, such as a policy addressing public records on personal electronic devices. This approach would promote the adoption of consistent cohesive updates and functional rules that they are centrally located and logically organized. To that end, for your review and consideration, we've attached two representative samples of council policies used in the city's Elk Grove and Cotati and can provide additional samples upon request. Should this address be of interest, we look forward to receiving further city council direction regarding creating similar manuals for the use of city for any other member that wishes to place an item or something similar on the upcoming agenda. Just wanted to make that clear because now it's being masked as a handbook for policy, well, it's censure, just so I wanted to make that clear, thank you.
And I disagree 100% and you're entitled to your opinion, I'm entitled to mine, there's nothing censure about what I have proposed.
The letter from Andre, if you guys need it, I'm going to set it for the record and I'm going to submit it to Carol Lee so that there's no biased opinion on what was just read from the attorney to all of us.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to review and come back with a suggestion, recommendation on council policies.
And the city attorney, I would hope, staff and city attorney?
We'll include the city attorney in that motion.
Do I have to?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
And that also includes the censure policy, right, Andre?
You already have a motion and a second on the agenda.
I know, but I'm asking you a question.
I didn't make the motion.
No, I'm asking you a question, that also includes the censure?
The motion was just for me to come back and provide a policy.
Yeah, is that policy going to be inclusive of the letter that I just submitted to you?
I don't, that was not the direction, I don't think that's your motion. Your motion is to come back with a policy for your consideration.
I wasn't specific on any particular policies.
Right.
Okay.
The motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm going to oppose because I think censure is going to be in there because I read your letter, so it's really tricky wording, thank you though.
Okay, we move on.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
We move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, please read the statement.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have some cards, Robert Harriman.
I have one word, pathetic, pathetic. This councilwoman has disrupted everything that flows here, it's unbelievable to me. She interrupts constantly, she needs to, I want my tax dollar to send her to school to learn how to conduct herself in a city council meeting, okay? Because I've had it with the interruptions and cohesiveness, it's ridiculous, okay? It makes our whole city, our council and everything look stupid and we're not. Mr. Cox has over 30 years' experience as a city manager. What, does she think he's stupid? Because he's not. Same with all you guys here, council members, excuse me, but I've about had it, okay? I don't know how we can get around this, but we're going to have to figure out a way, okay? Because she's not doing anything except starting turbulence, okay? She has her crony come up here, say all that stuff, there's plenty here and we're not going to change all our city because she doesn't pay attention, doesn't follow the rules, all right? That's a matter of what it is. I've never seen a council member in 35 years of living here in Victorville ask so many stupid questions and disrupt us conducting a good city council meeting, okay? Those are my comments and I would hope this comes to an end.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Neri.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jennifer Neri from Root, Revive Our Old Town. I'm here on behalf of Root to express our gratitude to the city for your support and for your assistance with our first neighborhood picnic on April 22nd. We would like to thank the Captain Schuler for having your K-9 officer, Raider, and his partner attend our picnic. They were a hit and everybody loved them and you have a beautiful dog. And we would also like to thank the county fire department for their attendance and support at our picnic as well. Last but not least, thank you Councilmember Negretti, Councilmember Gomez, and City Manager Doug Robertson for attending our picnic, it was nice seeing you all there, looking forward to working with you all in the future, thank you.
Thank you so much. Elena or Helen or I believe, no last name, Helen?
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor, I am not going to be too long. I am concerned about Bear Valley Road Street, too many people die on this street, motorcycle died last Saturday, another one died last month and July 4th last year, so I was wondering if you can maybe try to work on something to protect motorcycle, put a bike rake or something on Bear Valley Road to prevent people to die because it's very often and I ride a motorcycle scooter too and I cannot ride on Bear Valley Road because it's too dangerous, so I don't know if you can have a project or something to try to, because I know Bear Valley is a very long street, but I don't know what can you do with that because it's very, very dangerous. People die all the time. There is flowers and teddy bear and a lot of gift all over the place because people die, motorcycle, bicycle, same people walking, they are killed by a bike car, so if you can do something would be great. This is my only concern tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you ma'am.
Is that Doug? Yeah, I got most of that, I'll re-listen to it.
Contact.
Yeah.
Al Cutello.
Al, that's you.
I've seen all the stuff up there, but I haven't seen the word crime once. There's so much crime up here, it's crazy, especially in my neighborhood. I got my life threatened about a month ago and the guy said, before you die, you're going to suffer and I got five or six witnesses there. Then the cops came around the corner and he had left and they couldn't find him. But another night, I'm in bed, on the wall, I thought it was a TV, so I lowered that down, again on my wall, on my bedroom. So I went on, I knocked on the wall and the guy knocked back and I knocked four times and he knocked five times and then I quit, I knew they were trying to sucker me outside to maybe do a number on me. I help people all the time that are in trouble with bad guys and I'm in trouble with all the bad guys for helping people. Three nights ago, my neighbor across the street, boom, 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 they blew a whole bunch of bullets shot in his house, shot a bullet in all the cars, right across the street from my house and I think they mistaked his house from mine, to tell you the truth. We need cops up here. I called, the other day I called 911, I said, there's a guy walking right now in my neighborhood who's very suspicious and I told her, what are you doing and she says, you call that suspicious? I said, yes, I do, so what happens? That night, I'm laying in bed and my neighbor has all the lights in his driveway and where my bed is, I can just look out, I don't even have to move and I can see his whole driveway lit up and there's that guy that I called the cops on, I told them to come out and check him out and he's walking up and down trying to figure out a way to get in the house and then he walked around the back and I called the cops, they come right out there, one guy standing in the front and we got the best police force up here. One guy standing in the front and this other guy comes out and he said, did you check the doors and windows? He says, yeah, he says, okay, let's go. I said, wait, I said, my wall is only about three feet and a half tall, that guy could jump over the wall and be in my backyard, or he could have jumped over the wall and be in my backyard and jumped on the other wall and be in the golf course and going down the golf course. I said, get in the car and go down the golf course, check out, they said, we can't go on the golf course. I said, that's baloney, the cops always went down the golf course, that's where all the trouble starts, is on that golf course. They cut holes in people's fences and everything else to get in the yard. And I'm sick of the crime, I sleep at night.
Al, your time is up.
I sleep at night with a shotgun beside me, I have to, because you people are not doing your job, you need to hire 10 more cops.
Al, your time is up.
The best thing against crime prevention.
Al, your time is up.
Patrolling and you people aren't doing nothing about your number one job, protecting us and you're not doing it.
Your time's up, sir.
That was the last card that I had.
Oh, we need another mayor.
Thank you. That was the last card that I had, we move on to our city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have one big item, one big event coming up this Saturday that is, this is our shred fest and mulch giveaway at the Victor Valley Material Recovery Facility at 17,000 Abbey Lane in Victorville, just off Stoddard Wells Road. All these things are free, there's on my notes here, I have free listed about 12 times, I'm not going to say the word free 12 times. You can bring four banker's boxes of paper documents, this is for all high desert residents, not just Victorville, four banker boxes of paper documents to be shredded. There is mulch and compost giveaway, this is a self-serve, 50 gallons per resident, drop off of TVs, computers, appliances, mattresses, box springs, please bring them there, don't dump them in the desert. We may have a bounty on people dumping in the desert in the very near future, if you were here at 3 o'clock, you heard about that. Reusable grocery bags to the first 200 visitors and there is a buyback center to redeem CRV bottles and cans for cash. So all those things are taking place on Abbey Lane at the Material Recovery Facility from 8:00 a.m. until noon, more information is available on the city's website.
Thank you.
Did I say it's free? It's free.
And now we have councilmembers' reports. I'll start over here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the members of the Region 5, our Old Town, for having a barbecue. It was a great opportunity to feel like a community and when we have so many commuters and, you know, we've fragmented high desert, you know, I'll jump at every opportunity to do something like that and I hope that Root keeps doing what they're doing and we're going to build momentum. Imagine, I believe it was the first time that they had something like that and I support that 1,000% and anything to bring this community closer. I think the misperception is, is that, you know, people don't care and that's just not the case. Root is a bunch of fantastic folks, city, county, we have great folks all over the county and the high desert especially and that's probably the best part about this job is getting to meet those folks, so it takes time and energy, but the enthusiasm and all that that I saw is exactly what I'm trying to hope for, for this city going forward and that we keep building on it and as we have more jobs and people start working up here instead of down the hill, I think you're going to get a bigger sense of community, that's why I really appreciate the parks and all the events that the city's done, so city staff, well done. County Fire and County Sheriffs, thank you so much for also supporting our community.
If Al had been at our, Al the Speaker had been at our budget session this afternoon, he would realize that we are faced with multiple priorities, many, many duties, certainly the most important is public safety in everybody's mind here, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Every new police officer costs $250,000 roughly, we're looking for a million dollars in this budget for next year and if we can, I'd love to see us add four if we can find that money. That million's going to turn into a couple of million after a couple of years with benefits and payroll and everything else. It's a huge problem, a huge chore to, and four new cops isn't what Al wants, he wants 24 or 44, I don't know. For the council, just one other item, we had a budget meeting with the VVWRA staff and Scott Nassif from Apple Valley, our finance committee met and we are revising the budget presentation and I think we're going to do a much better job than has been done in the past of identifying the capital replacement needs at VVWRA together with operations and maintenance and we're going to look at how fees are covering those real costs and we're not going to muddy the picture by throwing in grant revenues from this and borrowing revenues from that, we're going to look at the cost of operating that agency and the fees we're charging and I am, it pains me to say, I'm convinced those rates are going to have to go up, the fees just aren't sufficient. They're covering an operational loss with borrowed money and grant money and that's all intended for other purposes, so that's coming down the road and it's not that far away, I would see in the next year, six months to a year, we're going to be dealing with the financial issues at VVWRA.
Well, I'm sorry to say that I was not able to attend the picnic in Old Town, I really intended to, but Mayor Pro Tim Cox and I had to attend a grand opening and I did a presentation and then I also work, I don't live off of the system, I am not on welfare, I work. I work six, seven days a week, believe, believe it or not, at my age, I still do. And I prepare income tax and I cancel my morning appointments to do the grand opening. But I do have an obligation to the community that I work with and I had to work that afternoon and that's the reason I was not there. But my heart was there with you. So please forgive me for not being there. And I understand it was a beautiful turnout. My family was there. As you know, the Latin Express, they're my family. Yes, my uncle and my cousins, they're all my family. We've been here forever. But anyhow, the next time you have another event, I promise you that I will be there. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After the last council meeting, we talked about the priority in, in public safety and also streets. Staff pointed out the major projects we have underway. $12 million street improvements immediately. I hope that, we, we know it's going to go fairly smoothly. We've got larger projects coming up. And after that, I got maybe a dozen calls from individuals pointing out where our current pavement is coming apart and people are running into them, concerned about public liability, not that any of them complained about the personal liability. And I have a list of those and I'll pass them on to staff. I won't bother anyone that now, do I? But anyway, we're in the middle of the budget. We're going to have a lot of requests. I hope people are aware of the amount of work that staff and council put in that budget and we get back to the same issues that we've had for the last three or four years. Public safety, police and fire, streets, and creating jobs. And any suggestions and input that you want to help, they're much appreciated. Thank you.
So I also have some comments. For the ease of reading the documents that we're, we were reading for the BIA and the stakeholders, I'm requesting that staff not only label each document, but also add bullet points to each of the documents to facilitate the reading. It, it was like, is this the final draft? Is this the old one? Are we substituting this? Are we substituting that? And if you haven't noticed, I do a lot of reading and I ask a lot of questions that are very relevant. So it just facilitates for some of those documents, if you have like a clear title on the top, not just agenda, this, this, or whatever. I, I just want to be able to follow through with what's going on. Think of it as a table of contents per se. So if you're preparing these documents and Blanca or the council will be reading it, think, will they understand what's happening? Is this the final draft? Will she know that's the final draft? It took me a while to catch up to that, so it would make it easier for me for the documents that I'm discussing, the resolutions in particular. That's a lot of legality to read. Also, for the comment to the first speaker, you know, and just to realize that Angelo is vouching for you so that I can appoint you as a planning commissioner. I'm so glad I didn't. Thank you. Wow. The other thing I'm going to do is the list of questions that I had for all the consent calendars, instead of reading them here, I'm going to submit them for the record and I'm going to ask if Carol Lee can please give a copy to Doug? Because these are some of the questions that I had regarding the consent calendar, so I don't bore all of you. And then finally, Chief Schuler, just an update on the coffee with a cop, please. If that's a possibility right now, how is that going?
Yeah, so the, the question about coffee with a cop, that's a, a program that we're going to so-called bridge the gap with the community. Give an opportunity for the community maybe once a month to come to a restaurant or a coffee shop, sit down with a patrol officer, lieutenant or myself and talk about current events or talk about whatever they have in their mind. So that's in the works right now and we'll be seeing that real soon.
Thank you for that. And that was the end of my comments.
Thank you.
What about items for future agendas? That's not on the list, but we probably ought to put it there since we adopted that policy.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, no. We have adopted a policy that's effective. Is that tonight, next agenda, Mr. Attorney?
That one, I believe, is effective. You asked it to be effective immediately.
Okay.
We go on the next agenda.
Something on the next agenda, let's bring it up and either agree or not agree.
Right.
But it has to be voted on.
And there are a couple of items that, that Councilmember Gomez had previously asked before that policy was in effect. Those will probably be grandfathered in for the next agenda.
Okay, what are they? I don't, I don't recall the specific nature of them. Yeah, they're in, they're in the email. They'll be on the next agenda at this point. They what? They'll be on the next agenda. The city attorney advised that they, they were grandfathered because they were asked for prior to the adoption of that policy.
Okay.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.